Good morning, 10:00 AM, May 22nd. This is a special meeting of the Griggs County Commission. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Abriel.
You just jumped on now. Josh, are you there? Oh, hold on.
Tranby.
Here.
Zorn is absent. Edlund.
Here.
Present. And Wakefield is here.
Josh is on.
Josh, Abriel.
Josh, are you here?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Josh Abriel is attending.
I'm just having a little trouble, I apologize.
Attending via Zoom. Okay. Have a look at the agenda. It's a one-item agenda. This is to address the vacancy in the Sheriff's Department.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Edlund to approve the agenda as presented.
And I'll second it.
Seconded by Tranby. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no sign. Agenda approved. So, we're conducting interviews here for the position of sheriff. We have two candidates, Amberly Michaelis and Marcus Holland. At 10:05 and Holland at 11 o'clock. I think you could just well contact Holland and move that up. I can't believe it's taking an hour.
Okay.
Move it to 10:30. For sure, maybe even before that.
Good morning, Amberly.
Good morning.
Good morning. So, maybe we should just start, Amberly, with what your thoughts on this are. You responded to an advertisement for the sheriff's position and I guess you can fill us in on what your take on this whole thing is.
My intent would be to step in and try to get the community back into place. I've had a lot of citizens call me and ask me if I could please help them out. My intention would be to do that until I could find somebody decent to step in and take over, whether that's six months, two years, whatever it may be, get it back fully staffed and get it under control to where the citizens can trust us again and trust whoever it may be that could come in and take over. That would be my full intentions of it.
And are you certified right now? Like, could you work the streets? What is your credentials?
I just have to shoot. I just have to qualify. Qualify one day, you have to wait 24 hours and qualify again, and then I'm good to go.
Okay.
Where are you at right now, Amber?
I'm in Iowa right now.
You are, okay.
So, do you intend then to run as a write-in candidate in both the primary and the general election?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
That's...
Like you said, I would do everything in my power and stay there, get everything under control. And if a great candidate comes along in a year, two years, it would be my intent to step out and let them do it. If the community trusts them and we can find somebody good for the job. And yes, I will be then in Cooperstown or Hannaford where I live, full-time. Because I know that question came up a lot, but I will be there.
And you still have a place there, right?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
My intent always was to stay there all summer and just be gone a little bit more in the winters.
Okay.
But yes, I still have my place.
So, do you have any... Buddy that you have would look at to be a deputy? Because we're down a deputy or two possibly. Do you have anybody in mind for that? Or is that still an opening?
I have talked to somebody that showed interest in being sheriff. She's at a neighboring county and she thought that she would definitely probably come down and work. And she's good, so...
That's just on a part-time basis though, probably, huh?
Ah, I think it could be full-time.
Okay. I guess I don't have any more questions. The training part of it, you've kept your... I thought it was two years when we were going with Bob, that he had to have been, had gone through the training within the prior two years to keep your certification.
Yep, I've kept all mine up.
Okay, you did, good, good, good.
Yep, all I have to do is shoot.
Okay. And I think that's just...
And I can...
Somebody over in Mayville does that, don't they?
No, Steel County guy.
Steel County.
Okay.
Yeah, Rick will do it.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
You just have to shoot once and then you have to wait 24 hours and shoot again.
Right.
So, that's pretty easy.
So, what would be your... I guess I did have another question. What would be the date if we so desired that you could start?
Well, I could start... I'm gonna be home Friday, so I could get with Rick and shoot maybe Saturday, Sunday, I'd have to check his schedule. I mean, I could start Monday if that would work or whenever he could qualify me.
Yeah, okay. As soon as it'll be Monday, the... What's the date on Monday? Twenty...
21. Whatever that is, 27?
27.
27, yeah. So, question is, okay, Rick's a coroner right now, correct? He's a sheriff, you know? So, you'd have to resign, correct? Rick would have to resign as sheriff?
I...
Yeah. And then these two candidates, who has appointed one of them, if you want to do that.
I don't think Rick's intent is to keep this as a full-time career.
I'm just saying that, that's what we have to...
Oh, yeah.
The process of, you know... I'm sure Rick is, please let me take the job?
Yes.
Well, I don't even think he has to resign. I think we appointed him. I think we just wanted to find... I mean, yeah, it doesn't matter. I mean, there's not a complication there.
No, I know, I'm just saying that, so...
He's just filling it out as a basis, on the basis that we don't have anybody.
I don't have any more questions, Amberly.
No, I pretty much feel that we know you over the years, so...
Okay, one concern, well, two concerns I have is I... If I understand this correctly, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is there only one deputy in the budget now?
Correct, that's correct. Correct, that is correct.
Okay. And maybe this isn't the time or place, but is that for... I mean, could that change after the next budget?
Absolutely.
Question?
There was three, or two deputies budgeted. Mr. Beaver did take some funds from the chief deputy and use that for Axon equipment. So, that's where that other deputy went.
Okay.
Turned a live deputy into an electronic deputy.
Yeah, interesting, but okay.
Yeah, interesting's a good word for it.
Yeah.
So, we got...
And then, of course, we have to discuss pay. I'm just gonna throw this out there, and this is with me being alone. You know, maybe when we hire deputies, we can chit-chat more, but for being alone, I would expect $80,000.
Okay.
Where are you at now, 65?
68. Yep.
And by being alone, you mean without any deputies or with one deputy?
Without any.
Oh, without any. So, if we move it up to the one deputy, then it would go back... It would go to the budgeted salary then, correct?
I wouldn't go any lower than 75. And that's right in with the rest of North Dakota.
So, right now you have budgeted for $68,640.
I was looking and comparing other salaries from other counties and I guess at 75 it is right in the...
Range.
Range of size and even our local area. Comparing, now, West is hard because they're always higher, but around our area.
Anything else?
No, I don't have any.
Amber, anything else from you?
Um, no, that's it.
Steph?
I'm good. Thank you, Amberly.
Thank you.
We'll be getting back to you.
I do...
Oh, hang on here.
I have one quick comment, because it's dirty since I usually work with the sheriff's office the most. Um, I think Amber, when she served as sheriff previously, did an excellent job. She kept up with the cases, did great investigations, and I think Griggs County was in a pretty good position when she was sheriff. Um, I guess in this situation, Amber would have the backing of me for sheriff. I guess I, not knowing that Amber was interested in it, I did speak with the law enforcement from outside to the area that was potentially interested in it. I've not spoken with them since. But I know each of those individuals was looking or is currently being paid in about the same pay scale that Amber's looking at. So, I think that's... I think that Amber's right. We need to get faith back in law enforcement. Get someone that has a stake in the community. She has a place here. She has said that she has a stake in the community and I think that she has and has shown that before. And I think she has the respect of the community. So, I think the community would be in a good position going forward with Amber.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you, now. Josh, are you still there? Josh? Maybe not. Maybe not. Oh, well.
I think he's here.
Yeah, I'm still here.
Any questions for Amber, too?
Not really. I don't know. I think, I've never heard any complaints about her as a sheriff, so I don't know. I don't have any problem with her doing it, so...
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, now we'll move on and as soon as we can have a talk with Marcus Holland, we'll do that.
He'll be here in two minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Amberly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We'll catch up with you later.
Thank you. Yep, bye-bye.
You what?
You'll take her off the Zoom.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So, little housekeeping, how we're gonna do this? So, after we interview the second candidate, each one of you will put your first choice and second choice on a piece of paper. We'll look at it. Then the first choice will be put forward. Somebody will have to make a motion, second, and we'll vote on it. It's how that works.
I can do with Josh then.
I'll do it.
Okay.
And then, yeah, so then you can't have secret ballots. This will just be to move towards a motion to vote on it. And then, once there's a motion, then we'll have a roll call vote, so everybody will know how everybody voted. And that process is kind of... With two people, it really isn't necessary, but that's the way the process is supposed to work. If there's three or four or five, you put your first and second, third, fourth, and fifth choices. Let's have a five-minute break. We'll wait for the next candidate.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Tranby to go on break until we connect up with the next interview.
I'll second.
Second Edlund in recess. Question at 10:21. Marcus Holland is here with us, interview for the sheriff's position. Hello, Marcus.
Hello, Mark.
Good morning, Mark.
Good morning.
So... I guess to start off, what is your intention? I mean, are you looking to be the sheriff on a fill-in basis? On a full-time basis? What's your goal in this whole adventure?
I'd like to take over Rick's position as the interim or temporary sheriff in the early election. I do plan on doing write-in ballot to run for sheriff and hopefully continue the process.
Okay. So, you're going to try to be a write-in in both the general and the primary election?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Your training... Current training position, where do you stand? Where are you as far as the required training? Are you have to go back for two weeks?
I would have to go back to the academy.
Oh, all the way back to the academy?
Yeah, I lost my, I left my time glove.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's a six-week?
Twelve.
Twelve weeks?
Yeah. And guys that I've talked to, I can't confirm it because I didn't check into it, but they did say a lot of it is online now. So, to help the rural communities out so that the person going to the academy can still work instead of taking all that time off.
Yeah.
But I'm not 100% sure that's true.
Okay.
You were deputy for two years here?
Almost.
Yeah. Under Hook in Weston.
Yep. I was under Hook, I quit before Wes.
Oh, you were?
Yeah, okay, okay. Well, Wes was the intern.
Intern.
Yep. Both retired.
Retired, that's right.
Yeah. So, we have other candidates. If you didn't, weren't appointed to the sheriff's position, would you be interested in, if the opportunity presented itself, the sheriff would have to hire you, would you be interested in a deputy position?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You're working at, or it's...
It's Warrior McCollum.
Yeah. And of course, regardless of the sheriff's position or the deputy position, we can't make any determination on what you do as far as running for sheriff. That's completely outside of our realm here. So, as a deputy, you still have the right to run for the sheriff's position and vice versa. Questions?
No, I guess I just, I don't want to, you know...
Yeah.
It's hard to have questions when we know you.
Yeah.
It's hard to even...
Right.
You went to the academy years ago, right?
Yeah, 2012.
Yeah.
Up in Devil's Lake.
Devil's Lake, yes.
And when you start the academy, you can start? You just need to qualify for the shooting? And then, since you're in the school, you can kind of work as a deputy if you have a supervisor, correct?
I think it's a limited license.
Limited license.
You have to do a use-of-force test as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's just like a 10 or 12-question online thing.
Yep, and then you have to do the shooting, the actual shooting. So theoretically, the way I understand it is if we had a qualified sheriff, the deputy could work under... Marcus could work under the sheriff theoretically and then at the same time also go to school.
Yeah.
And I don't, I've looked, I did look at Devil's Lake and there are some online offerings, but it's not completely online.
Right.
Yeah, you still have to go up there and do...
Some things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Online's a wonderful option.
Yes.
Especially if you can hire somebody to do the online part for you.
Oh, goodness.
That's all I have. Marcus, do you have anything else?
I just kind of wanted to state, you know, I've been around this county for... I've been a resident of this county for almost 38 years. I grew up with the police department in Cooperstown. I did my school to work with Bob Allen and Gillespie. You know, I remember that getting disabandoned. The sheriff's department with Bob and Hendrickson, Don Beviker, you know, the Highway Patrol with Tim Minehart, or, yeah, Tim Minehart and Mark Bethke. And I just remember how it was. It was just community policing is how they did it.
Yeah.
You know, they, I ran, I listened to the county commission meeting in regards to Sheriff Beaver. And according to the 2020 census, Griggs County had approximately 2,300 people in the county. And if you take that number of citations, not citations, but the people that they pulled over, that'd be roughly 1 in 92 people in Griggs County that they pulled over in one night. And that's incredibly excessive. And, you know, I looked at, you know, when I was deputy here as well as in Benson County, you know, your taillight being out didn't bother me, but it was just how you were driving. That's what stuck out, you know? So, it's not like pulling you over at 1:00 in the morning because your taillight, I might turn around. But if you're driving fine, it's gonna be, you know... But if you're all over the road, you're, you know, that's not, that's not me being hard on you. That's just me making sure that you're okay.
Forcing the law.
Yeah. And one guy, I do remember pulling over at 3:00 in the morning and was just swerving like crazy. And he was just tired. I woke him up, you know? So, he had just a little bit to go. But, you know, it wasn't about trying to, you know, write as many tickets. And when I was working up in Benson County, I talked to Bob Hook a lot. Asked him, what do you do? What would you do? Is this right and everything? And Bob kind of changed my career because I was bragging about how many tickets I was writing. And there was roughly 25 citations in one of the books. We had to do the handwritten books. And I was going through a book and a half a day. And Bob had told me, he goes, "The citizens of the counties don't care whether you write one ticket or 1,000 tickets. They care that you find the person that stole their pink flamingo yard decoration." You know, and that kind of changed the way I looked at things was, you know, you don't have to be a jerk. You don't have to try to prove that you're some kind of hot shot. And, you know, you have to just relate to the people and talk to the people. And that's kind of how I've always been. You know, I've been a member of Hannaford Fire Department, Cooperstown Ambulance, I've been around to, you know, be around to help people. And that's kind of what I want to continue with the sheriff's department. And I outing with Wes, when I just up and quit, it was just hard to work for.
Yeah.
I, you know, I imagine a lot of people that have run against their boss kind of can attest to that. But it was just difficult and I kind of just, it burned me out a lot mentally. And there was a couple instances on traffic stops that kind of got me complacent. And it was just the safe time for me to leave.
Okay. So, your overall goal is to stay in Cooperstown?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
I don't have anything.
No.
Okay. Well, we're gonna make a decision today, so we'll be in touch.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I better thank you just for the communications.
Thank you, Mark.
You guys have a good day.
Yeah.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. So, a couple of good options. If the goal is to possibly have two law enforcement officers in Griggs County, this seems like a, would almost be a fit.
Yeah.
And it also would seem in, depending on the scenario, that we would have the ability to transition from one to the other if one moved up and wanted to go, there would be another one in place. That's the way I look at it. But there's still, there's still a lot of variables involved in this. We have an election coming up.
Yeah.
And although we can't try to influence the election by our pick here, inevitably, we're going to. You can't get by that. No matter who we put into this position is gonna have a leg up in the upcoming election. So, that can't be the focus of how we appoint, but that, we have to keep that in mind. Thoughts?
I'm ready to vote.
Yeah, just, I liked Mark did a nice little speech there. It was pretty nice. That was, I mean, that was nice.
He's had some lifestyle changes, from what I understand.
Yeah, correct.
And I, that was inspiring.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. So, we can talk about scenarios as long as we don't, as long as we don't... Yeah, we can talk about scenarios. So, in the first scenario, Amber would be the sheriff. Hopefully, Mark would be hired as a deputy. And when it came time to, for Amber to move along as she indicated she would, we would have an actual replacement to move up.
Yeah.
In the other scenario, we didn't ask Amber. If the situation could be reversed, I would imagine, given her... Given her willingness to help the community, that's probably a possibility also. But then we would be faced with not having, with having two people that had to go back. Or Marcus couldn't work on, couldn't be the sheriff and work under Amber Lee as a deputy. And of course, none of this makes, all of this is just what-ifs because we have an election. So, whatever the outcome of our election is, we're going to have to adjust to that anyway. So, more than likely, whatever we do here is not gonna be what the situation we have in November after the general.
My question is, if in, let's say for instance, Amberly got the position, she won the voting, would that, would that motion to accept her automatically accept the, her pay that she proposed in her interview? Or would that be a separate motion?
No, we would have, we would have to go into the budget and then do that.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that was, but the intent? Intent is, okay.
So, it would be the intent to hire with, with the increase in pay. If you fail the increase of pay, then of course, the intent to hire would still be there, but she would still have the ability to decline.
Okay.
Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's called negotiation.
Do we have sheets of paper that we vote on? Is that how we're gonna do it?
Right, and just take it back here. Right, just take the back of your, or blank page on one of your, wherever, rip a piece off, just, it doesn't take nothing.
Oh, here we go.
Doesn't take nothing, just write your first and second, first at the top, and or just put first and second.
Josh, if you would just want to text me your first and second choice, and then I can put yours down?
Yeah, I can do that, that's fine.
Thank you. Well now I know, because you pulled it in.
Well, she can read my handwriting too.
That's good.
There you go there.
Thank you.
Yeah, looks good, doesn't it? Hey, wow, he sees his face. He looks happy.
Okay, so I have three for Amber, one for Mark.
So we'll need a motion to hire Amber Lee as the sheriff of Grex County.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Tranby to.
To offer it?
Yep.
To offer it?
Offer, yeah. Yeah.
I'll second.
Motion by Tranby to offer Amber Lee the position of sheriff of Grex County, yeah, we have a second by Edland. And for any discussion. Any further discussion? Barring no further discussion, we'll move on to the vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Um, you can pass the offer, if Amber Lee's still around, you can, we can pass the offer under her.
Okay, right now?
And.
Do we need?
Go ahead.
Oh, I was gonna say, do you need to do the budget motion now too?
I wanna do it, yeah, how do you, how do you do that?
Well, because it, it was conditional, so we need to see whether or not she hires a deputy or not.
Okay. Oh, that's right, you're right, yeah, yeah, she doesn't know if she'll have that or deputy or not.
Okay, so we need to.
Because she was, she was after.
Eighty or seventy-five.
Eighty, yeah, correct.
Eighty, eighty until she has a budget, uh, budget, a deputy and then seventy-five?
Yeah, but I think we need, when we hire her, I think we need to pass on the information that the other applicant would be interested in being the deputy.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And, and, yeah, I, I think, I think if we could continue this as a package deal, we're doing ourselves and citizens a favor here. Yeah, if you can get Amber Lee back on. Suppose we better get there. Current sheriff too.
She's been busy. She's been busy.
Yeah, it's a lot of behind the scenes stuff, um, domestic stuff.
John.
Hello Rick, you're in the commission meeting with us right now, we're uh, just in the process of offering the sheriff's position to Amber Lee.
I'm all for it.
Yeah. All right, um, tentatively, we, she, if things went correctly, she could take over the duties, uh, first part of next week.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where we stand, I just thought I'd have you on, on speakerphone here as, when she comes back on and, and so you can, you can be part of the conversation if you desire.
Okay, I'm out in cemeteries right now, so, um, if there's any questions, why don't you give me a call John?
Okay.
Because I, I gotta work with both hands and stuff, so.
Uh, hopefully you're not talking to anybody else there.
No, I'm not talking to anybody.
Okay.
Yeah, it's because they don't answer.
We'll call you back.
First on the does, I quit, so.
So you are talking, there's just no, no return conversation?
What cemetery are you at?
All right, we'll get you back there, bye.
My luck. Yeah.
Is she not answering?
Um, I messaged her, but she's not opening it, so I'm like, trying to. Find different ways to get over here.
Oh, do you have her phone number?
Um, no, but Kelly's gonna give her a call quick for me.
Here.
Can I just call her?
I can call her.
I guess I can call her.
Hello?
Hello Amber Lee, uh, is it possible you get back on Zoom, or do you just want to, um, we've tentatively voted to uh, offer you the position of sheriff at the terms that you put forward, deputy, uh, seventy-five without a deputy, eighty, um, tentatively, sometime around the first of the next week would be a start date, depending on how you can schedule your, your training that's required, uh, Marcus Holland was the other candidate, and he was certainly on board with accepting the deputy position if you so desired, he uh, lifelong resident here, I think would fit in, would fit in quite well, of course, that's up to, that's up to you, uh, he's, he's ready to start, um, two weeks, I believe, is, is what his notice was in, on his application, he would need to go back through the, the training, of course, he let his license lapse, um.
Okay.
But I think with you, you, you know more than I do, or we do, with you as a full, with you fully trained, I think there's some options there, and I think they op, I think they offer some online training now from Devil's Lake, so, he would be able to work part-time and still be trained, we believe.
Okay.
That was his thoughts, anyway, that's where we sit for now, um, I guess for us to move forward, at some point, you'll need, either need to accept or decline the offer, and, and then we can move forward accordingly.
Yeah, I'll accept it.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and we will leave this open, we will accept the offer with the terms defi, as defined, and we'll wait to hear from you on your start date.
All right, I will, I'll give Rick a call today from Steel and see what his schedule looks like.
Okay, and just communicate the, back to the auditor, and then that information can get sent back to us.
Sounds good.
Thank you Amber Lee.
All right, thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thanks Amber.
Thank you, thanks guys, bye-bye.
Bye.
So we'll need a motion to uh, hire Amber Lee as the interim sheriff.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Tranby to hire Amber Lee, Michaela says the interim sheriff, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Second by Edland, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Sheriff has been hired.
So I need to make a motion to amend the budget?
We can do that at the next meeting.
Oh, next meeting? Okay.
Well, as long as we're in agreement of what we're gonna do.
Because you guys offered it to her, with those conditions, so.
Yeah.
I think it's.
Yeah, we're fine.
Okay, I wasn't sure if we need to get that done today too?
No, we need, we need to fix that budget at the next meeting anyway, from the last two sheriffs ago, maybe from this last sheriff too, um. Maybe one of you should communicate with Amber Lee about the discussion that was had with Marcus. I, I, I think it would be in our best interest to do this as a package deal.
She's willing to work with him, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, he's got, he's, he's had some issues over the last few years, but I think he's.
I think those have been, I think those have been.
Trying to straighten himself out.
I believe so. So I mean, maybe both of you talk to her, one of you, whatever you, whatever you want to do, I think that would move us forward, it would give us somewhere to go to, to the election, and then after that, I think, I think we'd be in a long-term position of what we really need is somebody local that wants a sheriff.
I sent you her information.
Perfect, thank you.
Motion adjourned by me?
Commonly referred to as the Tranby, we have a motion to, to adjourn by Tranby. Second by Edland, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, I was waiting for Josh, that was his cue!
Opposed, same sign, meeting adjourned, thank you all.